We have great parking for. Arena.
Well, this was last.
In Chicago. Right.
I'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, August ninth. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller. Rosado.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Connolly.
Here.
Chancet.
Here.
Soffa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Yor.
Here.
Seron.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
We have thirteen out of fourteen.
Okay, thank you. And number two is a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone. Either at the podium or if you're online, make sure you have it muted when you're not speaking as well. And then item three is approval of minutes from May thirty first, twenty twenty two, June seventh, twenty twenty two, and June twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. Any corrections? Problems with them? Scott, can I get a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Soffa, second by Yor. Roll call, please.
Soffa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Yor.
Hi.
Seron.
Hi.
Vogelsinger.
Hi.
It's absent. Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Connolly.
Hi.
Chancet.
Hi.
Motion carried thirteen thirteen.
Right, thank you. And then next is items removed, edited, changed. Do we have anything tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go right into item number five, which is matters from the public for anything not on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for anything not on the agenda?
No.
Okay. Move right on then to the consent agenda. Alderman, Chancet.
We have approvals. The Cow Executive Session Minutes for June seventh, twenty twenty two, and Resolution twenty two dash eighty four HR appointing our FOI officers. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, motion by Chancet, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Chancet. Soffa.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Ayazi.
Hi.
Malay.
Hi.
Yor.
Hi.
Seron.
Hi.
Vogelsinger.
Hi.
Miller.
Present.
Rosado.
Hi.
Beck.
Hi.
Connolly.
Hi.
Motion carried fourteen fourteen.
Right. Next would be item number seven, which is presentation on a progress update on the water treatment plan. Is anyone online for that? Do we have anybody in line? I just noticed at seven o'clock, no one was here.
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll probably table that. We'll table that till the next meeting. Okay, we'll right on to item number eight, which is presentation on Main Street Reconstruction Project Van Norwick to Randall Road Cross Section Options. And I will start us out on.
I will stop sharing.
So back in, sorry, so back in twenty twenty, the city of Batavia was awarded two point three four million dollars from SDP through the KKCom. It's federal fund to reconstruct Main Street. We call it stage two from Van Norwick to Randall Road. If you guys remember, we did reconstruct the stage one, which is from Water Street to all the way to Van Norwick in twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. So this is just a continuation of the main street reconstruction going all the way to Randall Road intersection. This project is going to improve the condition of the street, the capacity and and safety, improve all three throughout this corridor. For last one year, our consultant CMT and Chris Bong, who is who is leading the project on on city's behalf, they have been working on selecting different alternatives. We have come up with four alternatives and wanted to present it to you to to get your feedback on on different alternatives. After that, we are going to have a stakeholder meeting. It's it's going to be a public meeting. All the all the residents along the corridor, school district, park district, or our own fire department, everybody will be invited to provide comments on these alternatives. The goal would be to for for comedy to narrow down maybe from four alternatives to two or even one. And maybe we'll present those couple of alternatives to to the stakeholders so that they can further comment on that. And then we'll bring it back to you to to ultimately select the option that we want to go for. So with that, I would let Kelly take over and and make the presentation to you.
Thank you. My name is Kelly Farley. I represent CMT. And I'm just going to do a quick overview of the project and we're hot, kind of give you an overview already. It's about a mile long project. This section goes from Randall to Van Norwick. And it's currently a two lane cross section, except for some channelization at the intersection of Millview to accommodate any turning movement at the four way stop by the high school. It's currently a rural cross section, so there's open ditches. The goal is to have a final product that will have a closed drainage system along with bike facilities. So as we mentioned, tonight, we're just going to do alternative evaluation and get some feedback from the city council. See if there's any fatal flaws, things you don't like about certain alignment or things we're proposing in the four alternatives. And as Rahat mentioned, the goal is to take these alternatives, could be all four, could be just one, could be two or three of them to a stakeholder. If there are certain ones you don't like, you know, say it, I'm sure you will. And then we'll take this to the stakeholder meeting, get additional input, and the goal is to come out with the one alternative that we can move forward with the study. We're going to talk about schedule a little bit here at the end, and then the next steps. With that, I'm going to let project engineer talk about the I guess I'll jump in here real quick, the improve the condition, safety, the capacity, Main Street from Van Norwick to Randall Road. That's the purpose and need that the federal process requires us to have and accommodate bicyclist pedestrians along Main Street. Input, obviously, we're going to be asked for input here this evening. Construction costs on this project will be about three point five million dollars, depends on which alternative gets selected. I guess now with that, I'm going to turn over the project engineer and he's going to talk a little bit more about the existing typical section. And each alternative and how it compares to each, I guess, to the existing conditions that are currently out there.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Metz. I'm also with Crawford Murphy and Tilly, and thanks for having us here to talk about this exciting project. So what you're looking at here on the top side of the screen, you'll see the existing typical sections of Main Street. And at the bottom, you're going to be seeing all four alternatives. These are presented looking east towards the river. And these are generally divided east and west of Millview Road. It's a great spot to maybe split up different typical sections if that's what we choose to do. So with that, the existing typical section on the top side there, you'll notice it's a rural cross section with the open drainage. So you'll see the ditches there where water is conveyed to right now. You'll also notice the sidewalk on the north side continuous along the whole roadway corridor. And then getting into alternative one down there, you'll see the urban cross section right away. You'll see the curb and gutter, and you'll see the filled in ditches. That would be a closed drainage where it'd be taken by storm sewer and drains and things like that. And west of Millview, a big feature of this section is going to be the three lane section with the two way center turn lane in the middle. And then another big feature about this is the multi use path on the north side of the roadway. Looking at the east side of Millview Road, you'll also see a three lane section there as well. You'll see the two way center turn lane, you'll see the north side multi use path. And you'll see a sidewalk, a new sidewalk on the south side because we filled in the ditch, we were able to actually expand that sidewalk all the way to the fire station. Looking at alternative two here, you'll see the same three lane cross section west of Millview Road. You'll see the two way center turn lane. You'll notice the multi use path also on the north side. East of Millview Road, you'll see a difference here. It's a two lane section. And you will see the multi use path on the north side continuous throughout the whole corridor. Again, that you see the sidewalk east of Millview, that's a feature in all the alternatives where it would just be a good idea, we think, to put a sidewalk in up to the fire station. Alternative three here, west of Millview Road is the same as alternative one and two. You'll see a three lane with the two way center turn lane. And then you'll see the multi use path on the north side of the road. East of Millview Road, it switches up a bit here. Here's where we go with a two lane section with dedicated bike lanes on the street. In this one, because we have the dedicated bike lanes, we just have sidewalks on the north side, the same that's existing right now. And then on the south side would just be the new sidewalk that I kind of previously mentioned in the other alternatives. And then alternative four, it's going to be that three lane cross section, but you'll notice here a big difference. You'll see the on street sharrows, which is just shared use between the bikes and vehicles. Because we have that, there's sidewalk on the north side that already exists right now. East of Millview would also be the sharrows and then two lane section with sidewalk and north and south side. So east of Millview here fits really well only because it matches into the existing typical section of the recently completed project from Van Norwick to thirty one. So that would match the same there. And yeah, so and oh, another thing here, a hybrid option that could be done here is even though I'm showing sidewalk on the north side, we could potentially throw in multi use path instead of the sidewalk. And this way, that would kind of be like a split the middle accommodation between maybe bicycle users that prefer to be off the street near the school. And then maybe bicycle users that prefer to be on the street here. So it could be a way to accommodate both. So I'll give it to Kelly to talk about the schedule here next, and then we can get in some questions after.
I think, what were you? All right. Schedule, where we are right now, we're in the phase one study. Once we have selected alternative, like I mentioned, we will continue studying that with greater detail as far as our engineering studies. We get into more of the location drainage studies for one alignment versus all four. And we anticipate that to be completed by first quarter, early second quarter of twenty twenty three with design approval from the feds and from IDA. And also, once that's done, we'll move into the phase two phase, which is the design and land acquisition. And then the phase three construction is anticipated to start sometime in twenty twenty five. And here's just some general next steps over the next, I guess, six months to the end of the phase one. Present the alternatives to a public stakeholder meeting. We anticipate that in September of twenty two. Select a preferred alternative and present to the city FHWA and IDA in October of twenty two. And finalize preliminary engineering studies in February of twenty three. I'll hold public information meeting in February of twenty three and submit draft PDR project development report to IDA in March twenty twenty three. We'll get their comments back and hopefully we'll get those around, turn around pretty quickly or anticipate, and it could be two months tied out, so it could take a little longer. All depends. And submit final PDR and attain design approval in May twenty three. And then once that happens, we can advance to phase two. With that, we will open up to any questions you have on those four alternatives that Jeremy just presented.
Great. Questions?
Yeah.
Mark. Do we have the is enclosing the the stormwater requirement? And do we know Rahat, do we have drainage issues over there? Because now we're forcing more water into our stormwater system, setting it directly to the river. And if there's not drainage issues, is that a thing we need to fix?
Yeah, yeah, the, is it required? No, if you have an urban cross section, it will be, but given the tight right of way that's out there, you want to facilitate sidewalk on the south side. It's going to be hard to keep that open ditch and want to have sidewalk on the south side. Still, obviously, there's sidewalk on the north side now. That can be turned into a bike path without I'm ninety nine percent sure without impacting that ditch. So a lot is going to depend on, well, there's also, like Jeremy has mentioned, there's also detention facilities that we'll probably likely need on this because we're adding more, one, more than one acre of impervious area, they call it. So we will have to find a place to have some detention potentially on this corridor, depends on which alternative gets selected. Which can control, go ahead. You can.
I just want to, I mean, we do have drainage problems out there today along the north side. I think several aldermen are aware. We have ditch issues out there that are not draining.
Fill up all the time.
Alderman Lehman, I think you received complaints about the lack of.
And south of Main Street, the Whipple, Ellen, Evergreen, that whole Roberts area, there used to be a floodplain that came up through there before it was ever developed. So there are some chronic drainage issues in the area that we'd really like to.
And when we did, is that true east and west of Millview? Because I just, it just.
Most of it's east, east.
I'm just wondering if that's an opportunity west of Millview again, that's a little bit more environmental to not.
West of Millview, you have the schools pond that comes out, and the school had all sorts of problems until they redid the field tile through the center of Moosehards property.
We don't want to add water to that. And that was one of the things when we did the other section of Main Street. I believe we made sure that the the storm sewer that runs down Main Street is big enough to handle this. When we did the original work from
That's where Kelly was just talking about that because we are adding, probably will reach the threshold for new impervious area. We'll we'll have to do some stormwater management out here in the form of detention.
And our drainage engineers have done a full existing condition study on the drainage conditions. We're just at the point where we don't know what it's going to look like from a proposed alternative to be able to do the study for that. But the idea was to be able to contain it, control it, and fix any drainage problems that are currently exist along this corridor.
Thank you.
Chris. So for all the alternatives, is there going to be land acquisition involved?
We're hoping no is the goal. The goal is to try to keep everything within the right of way that's there. That's why closed drainage system allows us to put in sidewalks, if that's what the council wants, the city wants. We go, keep it open ditches to the the east, I'm sorry, to the west. In front of the Mooseheart properties, it's going to be very difficult to get any sort of sidewalk on the south side and keep that an open ditch. So there's there's give and take. The goal is with the urban cross section, we believe we can do everything you want other than open ditch system. And keep it within existing right of way. So there might be some small acquisitions, like a corner cuts, there might be one at Millview near the church in in the park. But looking at existing right of way, your roadway already is on their right of. So we might have to ask for a corner clip in order to put ADA compliant type ramps in or sidewalk into that area.
Maybe real minimal stuff. I mean, we're not talking about going on, you know, individual homeowners' properties and trying to get stuff from the looking east of Millview.
No, especially on the north side, because there's already a sidewalk easement out there. The sidewalk that's out there, pretty much from the school east to Van Norwick, there's a five or ten foot easement that's out there. Because when you first look at the right of way, the existing right of way, it looks like it's outside right of way. Do a little more digging, we find out there's easements that exist there, and they were done a while back. So so we would, the goal would be to keep the sidewalk where it's at and widen it toward the inside, not toward the outside.
Makes sense, all right.
You got one online, Abby, go ahead.
Thanks. Kelly, could you clarify for me these? The center turn lane.
Yep.
On the west of Millview, does that turn lane continue on all the way up to Randall, or where does that stop?
Yes, we'd take that all the way to Randall. Randall already has like a three lane cross section because they have the left turn lane onto Randall, like westbound left turn lane. So that would be rather than kind of bring it back down to two lanes and then widen it back out for three lanes. We just keep it the three lane cross section all the way to the intersection. Now, there was some studies we did at the intersection of Randall because IDA and the feds make us look at that intersection as part of this project when there's federal dollars involved. Now, we did determine, we ran the capacity analysis and and what they call delay analysis, capacity analysis for the intersection. We determined that a right turn lane would be needed there and eastbound, sorry, westbound to northbound right turn lane will be needed at that location.
Okay, and but is the is the continuous, I mean, right now, there's, right now, there's a left hand turn lane getting into the high school.
That's right.
And then it goes down to two lanes until you get to Randall. Is the center turn lane, anytime we widen a road, we're going to increase traffic speeds. And it's wide open there. There's nothing on the sides of the road, which we'll get into my other question about cyclist safety, but just the added, the added asphalt at this point doesn't seem necessary during that, in the middle of that long stretch.
Well, there's a couple of things there we looked at. One of them is you'll have a lot of stacking that goes on. It's our understanding there's stacking that goes on for the eastbound to northbound into the school. So that left turn lane has a tendency during peak hour to stack up and block anybody that's going through that intersection. So that's an issue that causes some delay. And it has a tendency to stack up in front of the striping. It's in front of the firehouse there, which is a safety concern. People shouldn't be pulling into that. Shouldn't and do is two different things. So we wanted to make sure they got a place to get to get out of the way. So if they do, that left turn does stack up. The through movement, the eastbound through can continue to have a place to go and get through this, to the to the stop sign or to the four way stop. Now, also, another benefit to the continuous left turn lane is that the side streets to the west, when anybody wants to make a left, it stacks people up as well. So getting them off the through lane and into a center lane helps from a safety standpoint and a capacity standpoint. I say safety, I'm took, I'm talking more from a accident standpoint.
Okay.
The other, I'm sorry, Alderman Beck, I'm just going to jump in before you switch topics. The other advantage to a center turn lane there, although it may not happen in our lifetimes, is the development of Mooseheart. When Mooseheart develops one day, we don't know exactly where those driveways and those roadways will fall. So having that center turn lane allows for that flexibility.
Well, then to my to my other question, I'm I'm concerned with with this configuration being safe for cyclists on the road because I do anticipate right now the speed limit is is it thirty or thirty five down that stretch? So if we can, if we can likely assume that people are going closer to forty often, the 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 risk of pedestrian or cyclist injury, severe injury or death, you know, with every five miles per hour that a driver is going, that likelihood of of injury or death goes up and up exponentially. So combining that level of traffic or that speed of traffic with cyclists on the road has me concerned. But I also am not sure if having a multi use path only on one side of the road. Can you tell me kind of how that traffic flow would go for a cyclist if we have only the multi use path? Where that transitions at either end of the path into two way traffic on on the street?
Well, it depends on which alternative you're looking at. Like if you go to alternative four, the idea is is to have on street through the entire corridor. So we would just continue what was done from Van Norwick to thirty one on the previous project. That's pretty much the bottom right, if you see my screen, I got up there in the bottom right typical section is what currently exists east of Van Norwick. And we would continue that all the way to Millview and then west of Millview. We're proposing you do the the two way left turn and keeping the bicyclists on the street as well as a shared. However, as Jeremy mentioned, we could, because we have room, we could turn that existing five foot sidewalk on the north side to an eight foot, ten foot path.
Yeah, that's that's the that's the alternative that I'm asking about. So if we have, if we have the cyclists off the roadway onto the shared use path, how how do they get from the path on and off the path?
And where? We, I mean, we could, we could. There's no signalized intersection through this corridor, except you get to Randall. And there's no sidewalk on the south side of, south side of Randall on the southeast quadrant to even bring somebody across there. We can bring them across at Millview at a at a four way stop. But doing mid block crossing is probably not recommended. That that's what you're asking?
I think what she's saying is if if we were to have the multi use path from Millview out to Randall, then where they just have to at the signalized intersection, which is just a stop sign, is where you transition back onto the street. I mean, similar to what you see now today when people are out there and they ride a bike and they don't feel comfortable running in that section. They go over to the sidewalk that's alongside the high school and ride out along that.
We can transition, go ahead, sorry.
No, go ahead.
We can transition it to have the bike path all the way to Van Norwick. So or we can do sidewalk, keep it on the north and transition them at the school entrance if they want to go to an eight foot path. Then we, there's a couple of things we can do. We're just trying to here to get some feedback. And one of the things as we're proposing, you know, you got the diehard bicycles would never use a path. You got the ones that would don't want to be on the road. I'm, I I personally ride a lot and I I prefer to be on the path. I just don't trust people driving and texting. That's just me. That's where my comfort level is. But I also understand there's there's riders that'll never want to be on the path. So that's why the option four gives the alternative to do both, if that's what you desire. What we're showing, just showing a sidewalk on the north side, but we could put a bike path in there as well as a shared. Or is it?
And there's anywhere along from Van Norwick all the way out to Randall.
We could, yeah.
Could do that all the way out.
And so just as a reminder to city council, we talked about an eight foot path east of Van Norwick between Van Norwick and Route thirty one. And at that time, council did not want to do an off road path because of the density of driveways on the north side of Main Street east of Van Norwick. So we going west from Van Norwick, the density is much less. There's there's far fewer driveways, you know, per line your foot than there than there is going to the east in the more historic part of town. So that's where this option of putting an eight foot path on the north side works going west of Van Norwick. Staff, you know, staff and council maybe didn't see IDA east of Van Norwick, and we ended up with what we have there, but it does work going west of Van Norwick.
Do we have the right of way room going from Van Norwick to Millview to have the three lanes there to have turn lanes into the side streets that are there?
Yes.
Is there room in the right of way that we have to do that? Because I also feel like.
Alternative number one.
No parking, remember?
Well, right, there would be no parking on it.
But parking. It's going to be tighter right away.
One of the things that I feel like when I've been out driving and looking at some of the streets that are designed like this with the the shared bike lanes on the outside and a turn lane in the middle, that turn lane in the middle gives the driver of a car the opportunity to go over without going into oncoming traffic to go around a bike.
But they don't slow down. As somebody that rides their bike, they don't.
I understand that, but to me as a driver, I would much rather have the opportunity to go into an open lane than have to worry about going into oncoming traffic or have somebody come into oncoming traffic at me when I'm driving a car to go around a bike.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to train drivers to do is to slow down until they have that opportunity to go around a bike.
Well, and that's something that we've talked about with doing the road diet on thirty one is that part of that has to, that that has to have a reduction in speed limit.
Limits don't slow cars down. Street design slows cars down.
Road design, that's why I like four because it's narrower. And if you have people out there and especially around the schools, there's kids when they come out, there's kids all over the place crossing over.
Right, they don't go to sidewalks to cross the street.
Well, that's because we don't have sidewalks for them to properly cross. Like a part of this design is going to be also incorporate, I would say incorporating crosswalks for the students where there's a safe place for them to cross. And that's where drivers know, hey, I gotta stop. Definitely in front of the firehouse, it's an issue because there's a There's a driveway for them to turn in and that's where a lot of them will back up and turn to get in. And then you have people trying to turn left to go up at the crosswalk. Um, so I think some of it is some management, the high school and the direction of the flow of traffic. Don't let people turn left out of there, everybody goes right. Or something, but um I I'm I'm with Abby, I like the narrower roads, um. I am concerned about the turn lane going up to Randall Road, um, but Gary, I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, that's what went through my head is the development there.
Well, I'll just say from past history too, we had the opportunity to have a turn lane along Wilson Street. Between the high school and Van Artwork and we chose not to do that as a council. And I think anybody that sat out there and waited for the line to get out of the way. At Theory Queen understands the opportunity that we missed there. And so you have to think about the development that's going to go in there, not today, not tomorrow, but in the future. And if we don't do that and have the turn lane there, we're gonna regret it and we're gonna have to go back and redo it again. Just like I think what we're gonna end up having to do when the Siemens property gets developed.
I'd like to guess, I think there's really good arguments on both sides. And remember, this is just taking the next step, we're going to. So. East of Millview, let's just do Millview now. East of Millview, you know, we could do the the two lane section. With the eight foot path on the north side, it sounds like eight foot path. I'm not gonna speak to council, but almost all the council wants eight foot path, you type of like. Of same speed. But we could do the two lane section, eight foot path on the north side. Type of path on the south side, east of Millview. And then for the west of Millview, you could do both options to the public. You can have a two lane section on the one on the last, then you have a two lane section on the last. And kind of get public feedback.
I'd like to have Sheroes on all of it, no matter what what's design we decide to do or what sidewalk or pathway we have. So that way it's noted to the rest of the public that bikes are supposed to be there and can be there. Nick?
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask for input on two questions. First, east of Millview, is there a a an issue with not? Today, we don't have a a middle lane to business, are the businesses requesting it? Is anybody wanting it? Is there concerns traffic wise eastern?
There, there's no businesses in in that other than the end of it, right at Van Orwick. But the traffic will back up at different times of day when somebody's waiting to turn left and you can't turn because there's a steady stream of cars coming. So if you had a turn lane to queue people into, you'd be able to have traffic proceed through there.
Okay, and then second on the bike path, I don't. I certainly don't have a resounding opinion, so I didn't hear enough from from everyone else, but. Is there a preference from like the Bike Commission as far as what's a better? Use for bikers, I mean, there's three different options there. And I don't, I like them, I mean, the fact that there's something for bikers makes me happy, but I don't know if there's a a preference, so.
Well, that's, I think they're here, so we want to make sure we hear from them. Yeah, we're gonna finish with the council comments and we'll get the bike commission up here. So Abby, go ahead.
Thanks, I I wanted to follow up on a comment you made, um, Alan, about about development and having to think about future development. And I'm thinking about our strategic plan and how traffic calming and slowing down traffic is in that. So again, just being mindful of the width of the road is going to increase traffic speeds and. And also to be to consider that, you know, we can only, we can only maximize one value variable here. We can either maximize speed or we can maximize safety and we can't, we can't maximize both. So um. Slowing slowing the traffic down may seem really inconvenient, but it does keep people safer. I was listening to something the other day about um the the traffic during COVID, right? But that um even though vehicle miles traveled reduced, that traffic fatalities stayed the same or even increased. And they're realizing that the thing that's keeping us safe in our cars and the reason that we're not dying at a higher rate than we are. Is because of traffic congestion, because there's so many of us on the road that we have to go slower. And so we get into fatal crashes less, so. And I'm thinking to my own experience, driving around the high school as a driver is a high school driver. And that is the scariest place to be a driver in the world. So making all those students drive slower is fine in my book for a couple of times during the day. So yes, I want to be mindful of development, but I also want to be mindful of the strategic plan and the vision that we've put in place as being a really safe and comfortable place to walk and bike. And continually prioritizing speed over safety is not going to get us to that city where we are a safe place to walk and bike.
Sarah, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, those are some good points that Alderman Buck just had. Um, on the note of cyclists, um, I like the option four where there are bike lanes on the road in the um. Let's see, that's three, okay, um. The east of Millview, it doesn't look like that road has been widened at all. I don't know if that's just the way the picture looks. Um, there are bike lanes painted on there, so I just wanted to know. Will it be wider or are we just adding? The signs that say biking, um, as someone who rides a lot, I do prefer to ride on the road. And when someone is traveling very quickly on a bicycle like twenty miles an hour, I don't want them on a path because that's where my kids are. So my question is, is that road staying the same width?
Uh, all right, so right now, we have two eleven foot lanes out there and then two three foot shoulders.
Okay.
So it's gonna be twenty eight feet wide existing.
Okay.
And then, okay, I can tell you right now, though, because of the I dot uh standards, we have to make the road at least thirty feet wide. So it will be wider just to bring it up to the current design standards. And that's just mostly for emergency vehicles to be able to pass cars around the side of the road, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, oh, I'm sorry. No, Chief's had his hand up here, go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind council that uh this is our primary response route for station two. At present, and once this all these alternatives are put in, I see curbs. On the street, so the ability of the cars to move right, make passage, passage lane for my emergency vehicles. Primarily from Van Norwick to Randall is a concern here. Currently running twelve calls a day at present. And as you all know, going through the high school, it'd be rather challenging for my emergency vehicles to get through. And that's our primary route, at least to Van Norwick to move south or to Randall. Locations. Asking you keep that in consideration to look at narrowing the road. I do understand many, you know, Alderman's concerns about trying to reduce the speed by narrowing the road. But also I I just have to make you aware of my concern trying to move emergency vehicles. You like to trap, improve the same core, at least from Van Norwick.
Mark, um, yeah, I agree with a lot that Abby said and the only thing that. Cause I'm not a big fan of the the middle turn lane all the way to Randall. I mean, at some point, if there's development, have a developer pay to expand the road and put a middle turn lane where it needs to be. Um, I would support it being, you know, going west past the um. Fire station so that it eases any um congestion right in that area, but I just don't see the need to have that all the way to Randall. I don't certainly don't see the need of it east of um Millview, um. Despite the concerns again, now you're in a neighborhood, let's, we should, I live on a. On a four lane highway and the speeds are ridiculous. And so if you're gonna widen the road, let's widen it because we want Sheroes and bike lanes and and that type of thing, not because we want to make cars move faster. So that's I totally against having three lanes all the way to Randall and just there's like one or two streets to turn off onto. It should not be an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I have multiple thoughts and comments. Um, I live right off of Main Street, um, right where we're talking about, been there about ten years. Daily pedestrian and cyclist in this area. Um, I have two. I guess teenagers now who often are um in this area also. And um, so I have a lot of thoughts about the speed and the um ability to get to the high school and get um downtown Batavia safely. I can tell you already. West of Millview, people do not go thirty miles per hour there, they go closer to forty, um, and that's without a wide road. Um, so I think if we do add that turn lane in the middle, I. I agree with Abby that we're just gonna see speed increasing there and not um decreasing. Um, especially because there's, there's nothing else visually to even slow people down. And when you get east of Millview, you're more in the neighborhoods, you have the the driveways, the side roads, it just visually people slow down sometimes. Um, there, but west, it just feels like a highway, um. I, there's three type of cyclists we need to be considering here. We have casual adult cyclists, we have children and we have um people like Sarah and, you know, Jen here, who are more the serious cyclists and. Casual riders don't really want to be in the road with people who are going forty miles per hour. Um, it's not my comfort zone. So we just need in, you know, being the high school there, there's a lot of people, a lot of children who get to the school um on cycles or um walking. And we need to take that into consideration. Um. Let's see here, I. I'm curious if um Chief Yule is online. I'm curious right now, do we have many accidents on Main Street with people turning in um traffic getting backed up? I'm like, is that even a thing that we deal with?
Um, he is not online this evening, but I can get the statistics for any uh vehicular accidents on Main Street.
Cause I know it's not.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, we have crashed, we did a crash analysis on this corridor. Nothing outside the ordinary you'd normally see on a facility like this. Uh, we'd look at that to see if there's any problems that we, you know, need to be aware of. A lot of them are like kind of rear end type accidents at the four way stop.
Right, um. I tend to think I agree with Abby that. If you're forced to slow down and wait for people to turn, it just, it's keeping traffic calmer. And as soon as you put that middle lane in the turning lane, there's no reason for people to even think about slowing down. Um, and I don't think we want that in our neighborhoods right now. Um, a middle turn lane is not needed in neighborhoods, so. And I definitely support a south side sidewalk. So I'm get rid of the open drain and put a sidewalk there.
Sarah, did you have another question? Hand up.
Nope, I just had not taken my hand down, thank you.
Does anybody else on the council have comments? Jen?
Yeah, um, the other thing that I like about the Sheroes is it it continues on to what we've already put on there. Um, I think that if we go from a Shero to a bike lane to a path, it just makes that whole road really confusing. Um, and we want to send a message of the roads are shared by the bicycles. So I think having the Sheroes all the way down um is definitely something um that we need to do. Whether we do the also adding the eight foot like path or multi use.
Hmm, good.
Tony? Yeah, um, am I correct in assuming the intersection at uh Millview at the high school there? Um, we'll still have the same same turning lanes, you know, westbound has a a right hand turn and a left hand turn lane.
That's correct, and we did look at um. Alternatives for that intersection as part of our study. We looked at uh, I think existing four way stop, we looked at potential for signals, uh, which you did not meet signal warrants. Um, which is required by state that had to meet certain, I don't know how many warrants are, twelve warrants. Um, it didn't meet any warrants to justify signals until after twenty fifty, I think it was. We 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 project traffic out to like twenty fifty. We get it signed off by um C map. And um. It didn't justify signals, we also looked at a roundabout at that location. If you're building it new, and there was no school, no park, no church there, yeah, roundabout might be something to consider, but. Um, given the fact that's a park there, there's some federal issues we run into, what they call the four F. Um, they frown on when you take in property from a park. Um. Especially when you have another alternative that works like the four way stop continue to work. So yes, the configuration will stay the same. Now that we do change some of the storage links to justify, but as far as the link configuration doesn't change, correct?
Yeah, so if you notice now, some of the lanes are really short, so.
Yeah.
More.
That's that's probably the start.
So as part of this bringing up current standards, we're gonna increase the storage length and take the lead uh to meet the new standard. So it'd be designed for thirty five miles per hour. And so it'd be increasing all of them to what they're supposed to be. Um, which, yeah, it's just to help in all directions and actually doing it this way. Uh, it'll be ready for a signal if ever in the future, uh, that's true. But it it'll just be, you just have to do the same, that's it, everything else be ready to come.
And we'll design the intersection to accommodate signals for the future. We're not gonna build an intersection that has to be reconstructed when signals get put in. Things change, things may develop a moose heart, who knows? Um, but if that changed traffic patterns, intersection will just be a matter of adding signals at that point versus reconfiguring.
It'd be by then more.
Yeah. Anything else? If we have any more comments here from council, if not, uh, I'd like to, John, do you want to come up? Come on up? And I think you're coming down here just to listen to us.
Yeah, thank you all, um, that's exciting. I think it's, you know, I'm sitting here like thinking what a great opportunity we have to do something really good for bicycles and pedestrians and our community. Um, there's, I wanted to comment on the designs and we talked about this last night. Um, and I just ran by my comments to see if that if everybody's in agreement, because we were in agreement last night, I wanted to make sure. Um. Our preference is to create calm traffic anytime bikes and pedestrians are involved. I would say almost none of these designs do that except for the fourth one possibly because of Sheroes. Sheroes calm traffic when speeds are already low, but they do not when they're high. And if you have a center turn lane that runs from Millview to Randall, the speed is gonna be high. So our preference, though, is to have bike lanes with traffic. So that that narrows the scope of the travel of the vehicles going through and it makes them slow down. It calms them and it gives the bikers a safe and designated area rather than a side path. A side path unless you've got it going both directions and it's still very confusing for traffic. Because you would force all of the bicycles on one side of the road. So you would have bicycles going both directions and traffic that intersects with that doesn't know, they look left, right, look left again. And all of a sudden a bike comes the other direction that they don't expect. So side paths are not good, safe design for bicycles in this. So our first choice would be to have lanes all the way through. And then a side path and then Sheroes as the kind of third or fallback. Just trying to think, oh, the other part of that is that this corridor has been talked about for years as. The major east west corridor for bicycles and we're starting to try to work on that. And so this becomes absolutely critical that we get it right. Because we're starting to try and engage Kane County and do a nice crossing at Randall. And I'm not sure if if Sheroes or a side path quite accomplish that. I think doing a um lanes all the way through really does accomplish that. So um.
And the eastern section of it.
We're just picturing that, east of Millview, just picturing that same.
Yeah, that's exactly what we would recommend and that would be our ideal. Um, and that I think would accommodate emergency vehicles too. I was sitting there thinking that through like that, I think solves some other problems. But I'm not, I I'm really scared about the center turn lane, particularly. You know, there's a quarter mile there that wouldn't be used that we don't need stack up like that there. Um, but we'll have cars going ten fifteen miles over the speed limit in that area. Um, and then if you put Sheroes on the road and you do that, then you're like really asking for trouble, I think, so. Um, sorry, I didn't mean to if I repeated myself. Let me just make sure I made.
Yeah, and uh, alternative three from what I'm reading here, that would be. Would give you an extra foot on the width of the road. Compared to four with the Sheroes. Because the bike lane would be dedicated as four feet. Because the bike lane would be dedicated as four feet. On each side.
Yeah, I think when I saw that, when he pulled it up, I think you'd have to go two feet wider than what you've already got.
So instead of twenty-eight, it would be thirty feet wide.
So you're thirty now and you'd have to go thirty-two. But we would recommend going that whole stretch.
Put on each side then, right?
See, so that's almost a no-brainer in my case, sorry. The other thing I didn't talk about, we are having a lot of problems with bicycles on sidewalks. And so we would really like to do away with side paths, because how do you differentiate, differentiate between a side path and a sidewalk? You know, so it's very clear, if there's a bike path there, that's where you should be, or bike lane, excuse me.
And the thing I've noticed lately too with people on bikes on sidewalks is they don't obey the stop signs that are at the corners. Because they're on the sidewalk, so they don't feel like they have.
Which they're not.
And then, yeah, and then that becomes very, you know, maybe very dangerous for the bicyclist when you're in a seven thousand pound truck. And they just shoot across the road in front of you.
We don't want them on the sidewalks.
To see a campaign where we put signs along the way that says bikes don't belong on sidewalks.
Yeah, maybe like the slow down, we could do that. Anyway.
And that was the other thing I was gonna ask tonight was, is if we pick one of those where we leave a sidewalk over there, that whole section is relatively new. And so it would just be filling in the ditch out there and changing the grading to drain on the north side of the road, whatever we do with the road.
Alan, just to speak to what John was saying, so when I come out of Roberts Lane on my bike. I cross Main Street to the north side, get on the sidewalk, ride my bike down the sidewalk until I get to Van Nordwick. Then I cross back over to get into the bike lane where I do feel safe, because it's a more or less designated bike lane. Except for dodging cars that are parked.
It's just like being a pedestrian and living on the south side, which both of us do. You know, you have to go to the north side, then if you were on your way out to the park, you'd have to cross Main Street, walk down the sidewalk. Go out to the high school or wherever, cross back over Main Street to get to the park.
I'll just say this as, cause it's, it's on topic. But Main Street, certain times of the day is not safe to cross for a pedestrian, especially a younger one. So without having that sidewalk there on the south side. You have children standing on just very. Small shoulders of the road waiting to cross to get to the sidewalk. I've always been uncomfortable with that. So it would be very nice to have a sidewalk. So that at least people can walk on it until they get to a stop sign where they could safely cross.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Something else that I thought about when we've talked about, you know, slowing speeds down and everything on this. At some point, do we wanna discuss having another stop sign somewhere on the Main Street to slow traffic down? I know, and Gary's not gonna wanna listen to that. But when you have to stop for that, it meters the traffic through. I mean, we went through this when we decided to put stop signs. On Wilson and Main Street at the high school to be able to allow people to meter their way through there. And we argued whether we should try to get a light or anything else there. And they work and they keep people flowing through the intersections. And you do have to take time and that does slow traffic down till they get through the intersection and open it wide up.
And they race, yeah. So that generally, when you get a series of stop signs in between, you end up getting faster traffic between them.
In fact, on Main Street in particular, I think I've heard the most complaints about people rolling through. Stop signs and, and never stopping and we have to up enforcement from time to time. Yes.
That's another one. So where do we, where do we as a council think, I mean, I know we're not making decisions tonight. But do we lean towards trying to do? A two-lane road, whether we go with sheroes or bike lanes. And sidewalks on both sides of the street. I mean, I think that's. What I would like to see and what I think's going on here. I think that's where we wanna go.
Yeah, so alternative three, but both east and west.
Of Millview, so treat it as the same street from Van Norwood to Randall. And then deal with the eventual turn lanes at the west end when that gets developed.
And I would extend the middle turn lane just a little further. For the high school, send that a little further west, like past the, the fire station. So that gives a little bit more width in that area if something happens in the morning or in the evening when there's a lot of cars there.
The other thing, I think if we're really gonna look at that, we also ought to discuss with the school district. And do a right only out of there. At the west end of the high school lot, just like it is on the east end on Wilson Street, it's a right only. Right in, right in and right out. And I think that, you know, then it puts people at the signalized intersection, stop sign. But it puts them there instead of having to try to sneak out into that traffic where it's queued up to turn.
The people on that next street west may have an opinion about that, because that's gonna, people turn left so they can get back downtown. Now you're gonna be sending people to that, that one neighborhood and they're gonna be racing to that neighborhood, because now they know they've still got a stop sign to hit.
They're gonna get caught with the students crossing. The students crossing at the school and then the kids crossing to get to the different roads.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, if you make that, if you make it right way, right out, then it forces people to go through that neighborhood that are just trying to get back.
And I guess the stacking's all on the school, this is your property, so that doesn't matter.
When you're internal to the school, once you've come in off of Millview, you've turned left, so now you're heading west. When you, now you've made that turn, you go west, you can't come back around again, right? In the parking lot. You, you can only go out that other end.
No, you can loop back in the parking lot and then come right back out on the Millview. If you want.
But a lot of people do kinda go around towards the field.
And then head out the other one.
Some of them turn left and I look and think, oh my gosh, you're crazy. You've got people turning left and you got teachers turning in and I'm like. They're gonna sit there.
Cause the right-hand turn could be dictated just by, you know, a center median or a park job island or something out there. We could do that as part of the project. Physical barrier to prevent them turning left.
Right in front of the fire.
Right, so you wouldn't want a center median, probably build a park job median, park job to make force them to turn right.
Almost identical to what's on Wilson Street. On the one entrance. And then to me, the main entrance, which has all turning options, is at the stop sign.
Yeah, future stop.
Which is where I think the left-hand turn should be anyway. I think that's the safest left-hand turn. And we will have sidewalks all the way, all four corners. Will we have a crosswalk at the other, at the west exit of the high school or not?
Which would be a mid-block. We'd prefer not to do that.
And there's really nowhere for them to go anyway. We don't let kids park in the department parking lot.
But I'd like, would like to see crosswalks further east on Main Street.
Yeah, we have to figure out where we put one there. Roberts is probably the most used one.
So maybe.
Cause there is already one at Whipple.
So maybe a stop sign where we do, the pedestrian has the right of way.
So we do, like for mid-blocks, the city's general policy for mid-boxes is that we have provided sidewalks. But we don't necessarily throw the, throw the crosswalk markings in there in order to promote mid-block crossings. We, we try and push pedestrians to four-way stops or stop signs or stop lights to, to cross. This is a lot safer than trying to cross mid-block as we've discovered on Batavia.
And if we have sidewalks on both sides of the street, then when they leave the high school, they can go to the south side of Main Street. And walk all the way down on the sidewalk.
That's the place where they should be crossing is at the four-way stop at Millview.
Anybody else online have any comments? Wrap this one up. Okay. Did you, are you guys done? Okay. I think we're in agreement where, where we're at and we'll go to the next, the stakeholder meetings that where we think we're going.
Right, they're going to incorporate this into the completion of the phase one engineering. And then in the phase two will be when we have the public hearings, right?
And we can, we can change our alignment, if you don't mind me, is it okay to speaker? We can change one of the alternatives to make it, if that's what you want to take for just that one alternative. Where we make it like option three, east and west. Well, we'll continue the, the left turn lane past the, the fire station. But we can make that, we can show that as one alternative before. We don't have to take all four or three or hybrid. We can just take that one forward and let. I dot and the Fed weigh in on it. The sidewalk on the south side, will that go to the firehouse? Yeah, it terminates there now. We weren't planning on taking it all the way to Randall, just because there's. There's no crossing at Randall there now. And. But the firehouse is the last thing on that side. But there'll be space for it for the future. So we'll grade it in a way that it can be put in later if the developer decides to come in and develop that.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll go to item nine, which is ordinance twenty-two thirty-nine, proposing establishment of special service area sixty-nine. In the city of Batavia, providing for public hearing and other procedures with the, with the Winding Creek subdivision. And this is the, the new one out along McKee Street. This will be the special service area, which will be a dormant service, special service area as a backup for. What we have done in the past and now we're trying to make sure that we get them all done and in place, so we don't have to go back and do them a second time.
Right, yeah, this is the backup SSA for the Winding Creek development for the entire property. It's in the annexation agreement that it requires it. This would not have a tax levy. We would only activate it in the event that the homeowners association does not elect to maintain common areas in the detention areas. This is common, what we're doing now, and it's actually required under the county stormwater ordinance as well. So this would just be a backup special service area. The developer obviously does not object to it because it's in the agreement. So there's a timeframe in there about how long it takes to get to the process, because we have an objection period. The only property owner in there is the developer, so they would not object to it, but we still have to go through the formal process under statute.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. I will make the motion that we recommend the council ordinance twenty-two thirty-nine, proposing the establishment of special service area number sixty-nine. The city of Batavia, providing for public hearing and other procedures with the Winding Creek subdivision.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
You're.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogel singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen, fourteen.
Okay, thank you. Next is item ten, resolution twenty-two eighty-three R, authorizing purchase of five bike tool stations for an amount not to exceed. Nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents.
City staff along with the bicycle commission is recommending the purchase of five additional bike tool stations. We have representatives of the bicycle, bicycle commission here today and Anthony is going to present this topic.
Thank you, Alderman Rosado. Yes, before you have a packet that is discussing the purchase of five bike tools. Kit stations in an amount not to exceed nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents. So for those who don't exactly know what the bicycle commission does in the city of Batavia, just a bit of a highlight here. The Batavia Bicycle Commission acts as an advocate to the city of Batavia in developing legislation that supports bicycling. And participates in other activities as they relate to bicycling and pedestrian related issues. So bicycling has been quite popular in Batavia. We see so many families, professional riders. As well as those who just simply enjoy being outdoors, spending time in weather such as this today that we've had. But it's been something that's, that's been growing in Batavia and it continues to grow not just in Batavia, but surrounding communities. As well as people that just enjoy driving, riding all through town. So we have a beautiful opportunity to embrace bicyclists that's traveling back and forth in our community. Previously, the city approved a request from the bicycle commission to purchase and install a bike tool station in a South Plaza City Hall. Those who may not know, this has been, a station has been frequently used by bicyclists to make many repairs. And allowing them to continue on their journeys through the city of Batavia as well as other communities. But it is a stopping point to take care of their bicycles. Due to popularity and usefulness of the current bike tool station. The Batavia Bicycle Commission is recommending that these be installed at five additional locations. Although they have been actively applying for grants, they have been unable to secure any funding. To support this particular beneficial project for our bicycle community. Below you'll see in your packet at the bottom of the first page, five locations that the bicycle commission would like the CDs installed. One, the first location is Fabian and Route Thirty-One. Logan and River Street. Union and Pomarco. Rotolo Middle School near the bike trail. And lastly, the Batavia Apartments. They have. Basically gotten support from the Batavia Park District and a Batavia School District. To install these bike tool kits and the locations in which they have that property. Tonight, we have, as Alderman Rosado mentioned, representation from the Batavia Bicycle Commission. But we have Steve Erickson, who would like to share some brief words with the council. So Steve, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Anthony. I don't know that there's a whole lot more I can add, but I am a member of the bike commission. And I wanna thank Anthony and Laura for supporting this. And this is a relatively low expense to make the trails more usable. In Batavia, our neighbors to the north and the south have installed similar products this summer. And our coordinated effort allows the trails to be useful to trail users that are passing through the community. As well as those living in the community. The tool stands include the most common tools that a rider might need to repair a flat tire or make simple brake or seat adjustments. And the tool stands also include a rack so that you can actually place your bike onto the stand. To make the repairs instead of turning it over and working on an upside down bike. And see, oh, and this, this investment allows the city to continue to pursue. Being a bicycle-friendly community. So thank you for your consideration. And wanna throw my and our wholehearted support behind this amendment. Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
My office is right outside my window. I can see people utilizing that bike tool station on the South Plaza. All the time. I can also say that on at least two occasions, there have been tools that were damaged. Or, or needed to be replaced and that the park district was excellent partner in ordering replacement tools and fixing that. So that we don't have to worry about, you know, that those would fall into disrepair and, and people wouldn't, you know, keep them up. So it's been a really good experience and I think it's a good idea to put more of these out there.
I would also have to agree with Laura as well, that, that bike station certainly gets a lot of usage. But what I also think about is bike, bicyclists coming to our community and also enjoying some of our restaurants and spending some time in Batavia. So it's a beautiful opportunity to get people that's not. So it's a beautiful opportunity to get people that's not in Batavia to also come visit our beautiful town, so, uh, tonight we're recommending that, uh, well, staff has recommended that the committee at the whole approve resolution twenty-two dash zero eight-three dash R, authorizing a purchase of five additional bike tool stations for the amount not to exceed nine thousand six hundred and nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Make the motion to approve.
Nice.
Or move the city council, I'm sorry.
Just want to ask a question. So it's great that school district and the park district are gonna like help with the concrete pads is, I mean, are they willing? I know it's a small investment, but everybody knows me, are they willing to share some of the expense of like, hey, this one's their RMS, why don't you, why don't you pay for this, this one's there the, um, quarry pond, why don't you pay for that one? The, and then King County, it's like, it's right there in forest preserve, I just don't understand why others wouldn't want to do this as well and share some of that cost.
It, it is shared in that they are, um, putting a concrete pad.
No, I get that.
So they have expense.
But what about King County?
We haven't approached King County about, um, installing that unless, um, does the bicycle commission have any, uh, information regarding King County? Do you mind coming up to the microphone, Joanne? Thank you.
Laura works really fast, so we approached Laura first, we also approached the park district, we hadn't heard back yet, because we did ask them if they would be willing to put one or more into their budget, so we haven't heard back. We also did, uh, contact King County Forest Preserve and, um, she was on vacation, but she did respond and said she would be willing to hear information. And that is as far as we got, because there is one that's located in the forest preserve, um, property by thirty-one and Fabian. And the school district, I, I have no idea if he wanted to pay anything. Um, we, we did get them a very nice two, two level bike rec a year or two ago through Barco, it was free. And we're actually using, we'd like to use Barco now for this because of how great they've been to us, you know, yeah.
I'd like to see that it is a local company that can source these through.
Yeah, exactly.
Leah?
Just curious, um, long-term upkeep, whose responsibility would that be? Um, so with regard to the, um, park district and school district, the, the park district has been wonderful as a partner in maintaining theirs, we would expect the school district and the, um, forest preserve district to do the same. I'm not sure about Mercy Housing at, um, Batavia Apartments. So if we, if it comes down to us to fund and install, which I'm totally for, I think this is really exciting for Batavia, um, I would love to see them all being kept equally maintained and so if it's to the responsibility of different, um, you know, people involved, I would be concerned that some would fall into disrepair over time.
Yeah, because I'd be afraid that they're all, they're all gonna say, well, city paid for them, the city should maintain them and again.
It hasn't been the case for the park district, so.
So that is the park districts or that's ours?
Um, that is ours and the park district pays to repair it when it's broken.
Okay.
So maybe that's something that we need to bring up with park dis- school district when we have them here. Yeah, now that's something that needs to be on our agenda when we talk to them when we're, we're here, that if we're gonna front the money to start this and have these there, you guys can maintain them while they're there. And then when we get to the point where we have to replace them someday, then we discuss with them about funding for the second round of them, because I don't think they're gonna last forever.
And we're happy to follow up if you want with the school district, park district and with Barco.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second. So we have a motion, I was out on a second by Serone, uh, roll call please.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Soffa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
Yor.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vogel singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion carried fourteen, fourteen.
Thank you, council. Thank you. And I think we should also make sure too that we get these onto the, the little downtown maps and kiosk that they have out there that there are ways for people to locate these so that they don't just have to by chance ride past them, not someone they need to use them. I have that happen all the time when I have people stop up where I work to get air, but they need to make some repair to their bike or they need to take a wheel off. This is an easy way, I've always sent them down here to use this and then tell them where the bike shop is if they need parts. Like, it's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number eleven, which is a discussion on the response to the Army Corps of Engineers' request for comment on the river restoration study.
Yes, so the city recently received notice from the Army Corps of Engineers that they're, um, resuming a river restoration study that, um, was originally started in twenty-fourteen but lost funding in twenty-seventeen when it was only fifty percent finished. And the study was to, um, determine the effect on the ecology of the river for removal of the low head dams from El Ganguen down to Montgomery. Among those, uh, ten low head dams is, uh, Batavia's dam is one of them, so the US Army Corps of Engineer has, uh, provided, provided notice to all of the ownership of those dams, the, uh, city officials in each, uh, one of the municipalities where those dams are located. Um, ordinarily, a, a study of this nature is undertaken in order to, um, in the future justify, uh, providing funding to, uh, municipalities who wish to avail themselves of that, um, in order to remove the dam. Under the, the programs in this area, the cost split is usually a sixty-five percent to thirty-five percent, um, split, so there's no guarantee, they're just still undertaking, um, the study. But the first step in that path was to provide us with notice that the study was being, uh, resumed. As you know, um, we are through, uh, Tri-Cities as a, one of the members of Fox River Study Group who have also been providing, um, some funding for the continuation of this, um, study. And so, um, I put together a draft letter that I circulated today, um, and in our comments, they asked that we alert them to any, you know, special issues and conditions that might be present, uh, in our community. Things that we would like them to be aware of as they progress, um, with the study. And so, um, first I pointed out that we are currently engaged with the Batavia Park District in doing a, uh, master plan for the Fox River Corridor in Batavia. And that, um, one of the first things that we're trying to tackle there, because we do have a, an issue with deterioration of our existing dam, is, um, if the dam are, is removed, we are trying to come to some consensus on, uh, what we would do post removal and that, because the depot pond is a central feature in our community, among the proposals are those that would, uh, possibly preserve that, uh, depot pond, but that that was a very expensive, um, proposition for us. So, um, it, it factors into when and how we would, uh, remove the dam. But there's also other, um, issues that we see and are probably common to many other communities up and down the Fox River, um, having to do with the geomorphology, meaning once those dams are removed, what will be the, uh, depth and the width of the, uh, river flow thereafter, uh, because it will affect what that shoreline looks like, it could have, uh, affect adjacent natural areas that today are closer to water and, and fed by it. We're concerned with the effects on the two islands that exist in our community, both, uh, Duck Island, which is, uh, north of the peninsula and, um, and Clark Island, south of, uh, Wilson Street. And then also, um, the, the several storm sewer outfalls that are, uh, currently located, you know, right next to the waterway, but if the waterway was to, uh, be moved away from there, what would be the effects of the erosion from the water that would then have to find its way, um, to the new path of the river? And so I brought up all of those, um, issues for them to be aware of, and this was after Gary and I had a, uh, consultative telephone conference with, uh, Jeff Freeman, who, uh, you would recognize as being one of those, uh, who worked on our master water plan from EEI. And he, um, has also been working with a number of the other communities that received this letter and sort of keyed us into, um, those issues that are, are similar to the other communities. And so I'd just be looking to you, if you had any feedback based on that draft letter that I presented, or if it looks like, uh, it's okay to send to US Army Corps of Engineers. The next step in the process, they will be having meetings, so they, they haven't determined, you know, are they gonna have meetings with, you know, regionally? Are they gonna have separate meetings with each community? They really don't have a specific plan for that, but there will be meetings where we'll have opportunities to interact with them and ask about the various stages of this, um, study and then also the opportunity to have discussions with them about the, our very specific concerns.
Any questions, Mark? I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, um, do my best Dave Brown impersonation right now. Did they contact us as a municipality or an owner of the dam or both? Because Dave doesn't think we own the dam.
The owner of the dam.
Okay, just curious.
Okay.
Otherwise it's good.
Any other comments? Yeah, I think this is, they got money they want to spend, they need to do this and we need to be part of it, so we need to make sure we stay in contact with them, so.
I think one of the things that I was encouraged by was I thought that, um, if the, the study would take longer, then we needed the information for part of our planning process. But after talking with Jeff Freeman from EEI, it's my understanding, they're, they're kind of full speed ahead, right Gary? Yeah, so that things may happen very quickly here. Thank you.
We should send it out and wait for response and move forward with that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, we'll move on then to item twelve, which is project status.
Yes, for project status today, I'd like to invite Lori Botterman to the podium. Um, Lori has put together a presentation which, um, provides us some statistical information on our, uh, public outreach. Can you share the screen? I can't, thanks. I'll stop and you start. If you go to, um, the meeting at the bottom, zoom. Yes. That, and then share. And then pick your PowerPoint, the icon for PowerPoint. To the left.
Is it cheering?
No, I don't think so.
No?
Yeah, it is.
Is it? Yes, it is.
Looks good.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And can you see the little slideshow? It's at the bottom right as well. By the slide bar. Sorry. Anthony's got you. Hey, we're in business.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, just a real quick update on, uh, what's going on with our communications, uh, platforms mainly. I've been here since, uh, the end of March and so I thought it would be a good time to look at where we're at with our, uh, communication platforms. So I've, uh, looked at some metrics from April first through July thirtieth. And, um, so just to overview our main communication platforms, our, our website, cityofbatavia.net, um, we have facebook.com at bataviailgov, Twitter at cityofbataviail and a weekly newsletter via MailChimp. So to start with, the, um, cityofbatavia.net, um, we have a little bit over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand users and that's, um, just for the, this timeframe that we're looking at. Eighty-four percent of our traffic comes from desktop computers and our, um, top, uh, and fifty-eight percent of that is a decrease, sorry. That's a decrease from the last few months, so more and more people are looking at our website via mobile and, um, our website is pretty well, mobile friendly. Um, our top visited pages, um, other than the homepage, would be brush collection, uh, utility service, jobs, police permits, applications and processes, online payments and the garbage schedule. I don't think there's any surprises there, uh, those are things that people really want to know about. Um, so our traffic, um, our traffic has been up, so traffic is at, um, two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand visits, site visits, um, over a hundred-and-twenty-thousand last year, so it's almost doubled. Um, however, the page views have decreased, um, a little bit and that is because of the bounce rate and what that is, is, um, that's the, uh, average amount of time that somebody spends on a page. So a lower page view probably means that people are finding their information and they're, um, they're getting it and then they're leaving and they're not going to other pages, so that would account for the page views being, uh, decreased, so it's actually a good thing. The next one is Facebook and, um, we have over sixty-five thousand follower, I'm sorry, sixty-five hundred followers, um, sixty-five percent of those are women and, um, posts about our own staff seem to get the most engagement. Some insights, our reach has increased forty-two percent, our likes are up a hundred and six percent year over year and our visits are up three-hundred-and-forty-four percent. Um, our organic re- engagement and that's the people who, um, like and comment and share is up three-hundred-and-eighty-five percent. And, um, interestingly, according to Facebook, thirty-six percent of our audience is from Batavia and the rest is from elsewhere, rural Geneva, St. Charles. But that could be just where the IP addresses are, so people might be looking at the pages from where, where else were. Um, excuse me, next we have the e-newsletter and that is distributed to about four thousand, um, subscribers every Friday. The open rate averages about fifty-four percent and that is, um, really, really good because the industry standard is about sixteen percent. And the, um, click-through rate, the percent of links that people click within the email averages about five percent, so that's right on target, the industry standard's about two to five percent. Um, this year I, I redesigned the newsletter to add photos and it is now, um, posted also on the cityofbatavia.net and it's shared on social media. Um, the newsletter has increased by sixty-four percent, but the, there's a decrease in the open rate, I can explain that a little bit, and then there is an increase of a hundred-and-fifteen, um, percent, uh, email recipients. And that's because, uh, there were two email lists before and one of them was for utility billing, so I started sending the emails to both utility billing and our, um, existing e-blasts, so that almost doubled our mail recipients. So I think that's decreasing the open rate a little bit and as people realize, wait, uh, I didn't know I was subscribed to this and so they're, uh, they're not opening it. And then a little bit of a decrease in the click rate as well, so, um, that could be because people are just getting the information right there in the newsletter and they're not clicking through for more information. So some points for development and growth, uh, website, we are going to be adding a chatbot coming up soon to assist with the issues that we've been having with search, a lot of people have complained about, they're unable to find anything on our site. So hopefully the chatbot, if you don't know what that is, it's a little thing at the bottom, um, that'll just say, can I help you? Um, ours is gonna be a little, uh, robot dog and it'll say, can I fetch an answer for you and you can ask it anything and then an algorithm will serve up the right answer, hopefully. We're also going to redesign the website in Q one, two thousand and twenty-three and, uh, that is part of our, our plan anyway, so it's no cost to us, it's just gonna be our existing platform, we're just gonna redesign it. Uh, social media, I think we're gonna increase the engagement on Twitter, uh, currently we have over five thousand followers but very low engagement. That's a little bit on me because I really don't use Twitter a lot, so I'm gonna start using it more. Um, and then we'd like to restart Instagram, we've had some people that have requested that out in the community. Uh, we have an Instagram account, but currently, uh, we can't get into it, we, we can't exist, we can't access the existing account, um, so I'm researching on how we can begin, yeah. Uh, newsletter, I would like to consider lessening the frequency just to curb the unsubscribers, a lot of times it's repetitive information, a lot of our surrounding communities only do it once a A lot of our surrounding communities only do it once a month or once every two weeks. So I'd like to look at what that might be like for us. And I'd also like to increase the promotion of the newsletter subscription to get more subscribers. Overall, I want to use some benchmarking and continue to use analytics to inform our content decisions. And I would love to hear from any of you if you have ideas on how we should communicate, what we should communicate, what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. Let me know. And if you have any questions, let me know.
I'd just like to make a comment on the newsletter. I do like the addition of the pictures. It really. Makes it interesting to open up and read it. But as you said, I I don't read it every single week because it is redundant information. But I enjoy like getting that email from you.
That's great because I really do feel like twice a month is enough.
It's worth a try just to test it out.
Yeah.
To see what the next set of metrics say and then. You know, scale it back if you need to do that then. And then you'll have some good data and be like, okay, do we do weekly every two weeks or monthly?
Right. And see what people are clicking on when we do. And then we can also do an extra one if there's something big happening or if we wanna push out some other information, we can do that. But I do say that for the week, I refer to it if there's something like, oh, is there something important that I need to know about the city? And I go into that. Excellent. I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah.
Actually, this is perfect timing because I had a resident this past week commenting on the noticeable increase in engagement. From our communications director and like they've just been paying attention to it on Facebook and they've just been so happy with it. Super engaging, very informative. And they said, make sure you let Lori know that they're doing a fantastic job. So. This was, this is all like really great to see the growth, you know, in this area. So.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark? Yeah, it's great to see the growth. This is what I've been expecting for the last several years and having somebody in your position. And it's the the engagement is fantastic and it's the stories that are out there. I love the stories about the. About her staff and everything. It's just great and get them the recognition that they deserve. I'm just really happy to see that all your efforts are paying off. So.
You know, one thing we didn't mention about the employee stories are the employee stories that you have been putting in the Batavian.
Yes, yeah, I didn't. I didn't put the Batavian in here, but just because I feel like I'm not sure I have much control over that. We just give that to Shaw to put together, but yes.
You write those articles and you do a nice job because it's really a lot of information.
I love it. I love writing about our staff and our hardworking people here in Batavia.
Abby has her hand up. Go ahead, Abby.
Yep, just reiterating what everybody's been saying. It's just been great to see all the content that's being pushed out. It seems so intentional and organized. And I'm not shocked at all to see engagement rising because people are finding a lot of value in it. And I would expect that that continues. So thank you so much for all your work on this.
Thank you.
I like all that too. I like the pictures, especially like some of the drone stuff we've done.
Yes, yes. We hired a photographer, both in and studios. I think that's Andrew Shones. And he's just done an amazing job and he's taken some more pictures we'll be sharing soon. And he's gonna do a video for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about any other projects? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Abby has her hand up. Is it just up from before Abby?
Sorry about that.
Okay, and then if there are no others, we'll need a motion to go into executive. Or do you have another, Mark?
I have another. I just. It was great walking over here today and not having the fencing up and reminded me that. We had talked several meetings ago that we wanted to talk about our liquor code and. As as one of the options that we would have different things. So can we get that on an agenda item so we can start talking about what we're envisioning? In changing so that we aren't having to put up fencing all the time. Because I do not, you know, say right now, I do not want to see that fencing next year. I'll pull it down myself next year. So.
I will say that we did offer to the Park District that if they wanted to try a concert in the park without fencing. That we did make that offer. It's, I just think that they have a lot going on over there and just couldn't coordinate it from from their side. So.
Now, Abby has her. Abby, you have your hand up again.
I do. And I think Mark asked this last time and I just don't remember what the answer was. So I'm sorry. Are we going to have a conversation about our response to IDAT's robe diet letter?
So earlier today, Laura knows I just sent her this email. Our consultants had heard back from INOT and. The official response to the letter and responses to the issues in that letter will come via the phase one process. So IDAT has now given us officially the green light to go into phase one, which is really good news. If you recall, I didn't even know if this would be a feasible project. That's why we had to do the feasibility study. Now that they've seen the feasibility study, they're comfortable giving us official approval to move to phase one. So to answer your question, Alderman, yes, we will. We will eventually have the feedback officially, but it'll happen via the phase one process.
Okay, so they're they're moving it forward. What's the, what does phase one entail? So is the configuration through downtown going to be? Set in stone?
No, so phase one will be just similar to what we just did with Main Street tonight, where the geometry will be one of the subjects. That's decided during phase one via input from city council, via input from the public. In fact, we'll be required to have public meetings and city council. And then ultimately, we will send our preference to INOT and then ultimately INOT will either approve or deny that. Or tell us what we have to do. So that's one topic. And the other topic is, I know it's been raised about, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists. And side traffic and all those other issues are things that will happen and be discussed and public will have input during the phase one process. Up until this point, we have not been in phase one because INOT wouldn't let us get to that point. But now they've finally said we can go forward, which that's the good news part.
Wonderful. Thank you all.
All right. Any others? Okay, if not, we'll move into executive session. So I'll need a motion to go into executive session for setting the price for land.
Second.
Motion by Zafa, second by Malay. Roll call, please.
Zafa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Saron.
Aye.
Vogel Singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chancet.
Aye.
Fourteen. Okay, see an executive session.
We do not expect any action to come out when we come back to adjourn.
We do not.